All right, I think we're live.
Yep, we are.
Good evening, welcome to the January 10th Plan Board Meeting. We'll go around and do introductions, starting.
Robert Davies, Altona.
Ian McKinnon.
Susan Mooney.
Sherwin Anderson.
Ed Veal's unable to make it tonight, so I'll be chairing this meeting. And we do have Sue Mooney, Secretary of Justice. Yeah, and we can seat buzz in Ed's position this evening for voting. So let's see, we'll take the items in order. First, if anybody hasn't, there is a sign sheet at the little table, so at some point now or before you leave, if you could just sign in, we'd like to kind of know who's coming. And then we'll just take the agenda in order. First is an informal discussion regarding the barn at Mary Hill. This is a previously approved site plan application. There's been some discussion that it seems that it might not comply with site plan, so that's why this is on our agenda. Is there anybody here for that, from the applicant's side? Yeah, come on up to the table. No, we don't want it to be court, we don't have that power. So, again, it's informal, this isn't publicly noticed or anything like that, so it's more so there was some discussions, I know. I had shared to me, Dale, is that it seemed that the parking lot was larger than what was approved on the site plan for the project. And then, I know the shed, there was a permit granted for the shed, so this is also partially a discussion. Nottingham doesn't see a lot of site plans, it's not a huge commercial town. Is more procedurally for the board, we're trying to make sure Alana, the Land Use Secretary, Dale on the code enforcement, permit side, and then us as to what the expectations are if there are any deviations from a site plan. So my opinion has been too that, one of the things that is in the requirements of the site plan regulations is an as-built plan. Historically, it hasn't been the most enforced thing at the town level, but again, we don't see a lot of applications. So, obviously, I know debate group did some of the survey and all that is if, you know, I think that is a requirement within the site plan regulations, and where there's question as to what the limits are versus what's approved, they are, what is there versus what's approved. I think that's really the only way to apple to apple compare. And the one I really don't know the answer to is site recently, is there was, they obviously approved the event venue, there was a set large leach field that should be back to the top line adjustment to be able to actually farm that land, originally it was under an easement. Is, there was a shed, I don't know, like a 12 by 20 shed or something like that. The question is, when you have a project covered by a site plan, a commercial use. A shed normally, like if one of us called for our house to put up a shed, it's kind of covered under Dale can issue a permit. Obviously, there's some limitations, but when you're covered by a commercial site plan, is should, is that something that should be coming back in for an amendment? If it wasn't known at the time of the application? And the reason is that normally, I've seen it that way, because, like the expansion, if the gravel's expanded, which again, I think the as-built, which is a requirement of the site plan regulations, proves it has, I mean, some of the things is, if we have discussions on stormwater, that kind of thing, but then there ends up being more impervious, would that have changed a discussion item at the board level? So, I think the projects approved at this point, the site as-built really, I mean, we can do hypotheses, so I think the site as-built's the only way to really confirm what is out there versus what was approved. And I think, my understanding is that normally, the town can ask CMA, who's our contract engineer on staff, or even Dale, to compare and determine if, like, an amendment needs to be filed, just to come back before the board. So it's pretty common, just, we don't have a designated site plan amendment application, but it's basically just coming back and it gets noticed as an amendment, so you're not, it's not listed as, we can deny your site plan, you already have a project approved.
Right, yeah, we've done plenty of those with Dover and Portsmouth, so.
Yeah.
We can definitely get you an as-built, not a problem.
Okay, I think that's just going to answer everybody's questions, right? Because, no, I don't want to go out there and do the take measure and try and take 20 measurements.
Absolutely, it makes complete sense.
Okay. Those were the two items that kind of were brought to light, was the potential that the parking was larger than approved.
We accepted this in, what, the summertime? Spring?
I think it was earlier last year, I think.
Probably a year and a half.
Yeah, because you guys, they were building through most of last year.
Even after they came in for the second time?
So, we, the, when we came in for the adjustment, well, actually, I don't, oh yeah, you guys did come in, that was just to get the setbacks for the septic, so we own the property next door too, which is, so it's, we basically just took some of our land and gave it to our other property.
Yep.
And that was over the summertime when we, but the whole overall site plan was done a year prior to that.
Yeah.
And are we certain that the shed is a shed? Because it looks pretty large to me.
We do have Dale here, if we have questions as to what qualifies under a shed in our ordinance.
I mean, I, when I saw it, I'm like, are they building another, you know?
Bar?
Oh, their kitchen, or, yeah.
Chairs, landscape equipment, it's a shed.
It's the dimensions that I filled out on the permit application with Dale.
Yeah, and Dale, correct me if I'm wrong, but I understand it, it was issued, the permit was issued as a shed, correct?
It was issued as a shed, it was on the larger side, but we don't have anything that says what a shed is. I did have specific conversations with the applicant that this would not be used for any type of personnel in the operation, it is a storage building, they agreed to that. And that was what I committed.
It's a well-built shed, I will give you that, it's well-built.
It's on frost post and not a foundation, so it's like that kind of also,
Yep.
in my eyes leans it towards, you know, the shed, it's just, we want to keep the whole site clean, so it's a space for when we have an outdoor wedding to store all the chairs and the tables out of sight, not, you know, just leaning everywhere.
I would say it's a little more grandeur than a shed, because we wanted it to like, you know, we don't want it to be a shed-looking building in a wedding venue, so we were trying to make it look nice, I guess, is what's a little.
Yep, but from a use perspective, I think that's the intent, is it's.
Is that it's a storage shed?
There's no production or anything in that.
People would be really cold, it's not even insulated.
So that was really, that was kind of just it, was just, I know there was, we had, there were some email conversations in town of just thinking that maybe something looked a little off, so if you could get that site as-built in.
Absolutely, we'll get right on that.
And once it's submitted, we'll start the ball rolling on our end, we're not going to wait for a meeting or anything like that. At that point, a lot of times, we try and handle that stuff out in meeting, unless we'll make a determination, if we think there does need to be an amendment, we'll just push it through that process and we'll just do the necessary notifications.
Perfect, alright.
Alright, well, I appreciate you guys coming in. If there are any questions, just reach out, to Alana on email.
Will do, thank you.
Alright, thanks guys. Alright. Into the public hearing portion of the agenda, the first item is 2024 Scenic Road trimming by Eversource, so we did all receive some information on this, as to the roads, let's see. Here you go. Is there anybody here from Eversource on this? I don't think so, yeah.
They were actually going to try to go in March and said.
Okay, that's fine. So I think everybody should have seen, there was a cover letter dated December 8th to the board, requesting approval to complete scheduled maintenance trimming on various scenic roads in Nottingham. These roads include Case Road, Gower Road, the dirt portion, Ledge Farm Road, Mitchell Road, the dirt portion, from pole 875-32 westward, and Poor Farm Road.
The attachment that we got via email also had Stevens Hill, a map of Stevens Hill Road.
On the map, but not, yeah, not listed here.
But it's not listed here.
It's a co-op road, isn't it?
And also stepping, Stepping Stones Road. So, I'm wondering if those, I don't think Stepping Stones is a scenic road. But I'm wondering if those should have been added. Stevens Hill is, yeah, and it was the end of Stevens Hill?
It's at the 90-degree.
Yeah, so that might be Eversource?
Yeah, I'm going through the attachments right now. And Alana, they don't fill out like an application, right? It's really to just send in the request for the public hearing?
Right.
Yeah, you're right, they do include Stevens Hill, but they don't list it on their cover letter.
Yeah, so I took a drive down all these roads, so I have a few questions that I was hoping to ask them.
And they've done a lot of flagging in town recently, yeah. Is there anything that you have concern with?
Well, there's a lot that doesn't need to be done on these roads.
Like a lot of unnecessary cutting?
Yeah, and there's, I mean, some of this, on some of these roads, it abuts conservation, so I'm curious to what they do with that, and then, I mean, there's a lot of, there are definitely some trees that definitely need to come down, you know, ash trees and stuff. I just wanted to understand more about what it was that they were looking at doing on these roads.
My understanding normally is that they try and do this process ahead of time, it sounds like if they're willing to come in March, that they're not waiting for our approval and they're going to be out there the next week, so.
Well, and it did look like some had already been cut, that was my.
Yeah, I wonder if they, during a storm or something, if something was an issue, I know there was.
It's like that brush cutter thing. Definitely, so.
Bunch of source?
Yes, bunch of source.
It destroys the trees?
I mean, I think if they can come, if someone can come and speak to it, that.
I think that's fine, I think.
In the past, we've gotten a list of the trees on each road and sectioned out as to what they were for species and what the problem was for each single tree. And I don't think that's too much to ask, rather than just a carte blanche to cut what they want.
Right. Last time somebody was in here was a co-op, yeah, they gave, they gave an approximation of species and.
And how many?
Yeah, well, I mean, in the sake of time, I think that we can, it sounds like if they were already interested in we could likely just wait for the conversation and request their presence. And we can just continue, it is a public hearing technically, so we can continue to date certain. They just said the March meeting, so that would be our 20, March 27th?
Yes.
We only have one meeting that month?
Right.
For the elections.
Ian, before we continue it to a date, do we want to just open it up to the public if there's anybody that lives on those roads?
Yeah, you can pass on some questions. Is there anybody here this evening that wanted to speak on the scenic road notifications? Alright, we'll keep the public hearing open, just because we're going to continue it to the date certain. So at that point, I think at this point, we can just see a motion to move it to the March 27th meeting?
March 27th. I'll make a motion that we continue the 2024 Scenic Road tree trimming by Eversource to March 27th, 2024.
Second.
Alright, first, sure, a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Ananamous, alright. Alright, next on the agenda, case number 24-001, LLA Falzone, Raymond Road. Application from Joseph Falzone on behalf of the Forgotten Mountain Realty Trust, requesting a lot line adjustment between two properties. These properties are located on Raymond Road in Nottingham, New Hampshire, and are identified as tax map 69, lots 17 and 19. Good fore.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Scott Paul from Bill's Associates. And I also have with me Joseph Falzone, the developer of the project that we'll actually be speaking on, the next application. For the current one in front of us here, we have a very simple lot line adjustment. Mr. Falzone has worked with the butter of a proposed project toward the rear, and they've come to a conclusion of a simple lot line adjustment, a transfer of property. I have a plan up on the board here, I tried to color it so it was simplified and easy to understand. There's an existing lot of Mr. Bebo and his wife on here, and the proposal is to swap land with a large piece, lot 17, which would be on the left side of the plan. So the green area on the plan is becoming out of Mr. Bebo's property, and they will be receiving the blue. As an end result, they will be actually acquiring 0.25 acres more than they had right now, so they'll be getting a little bit of a bonus in that. You can see in the plan, the surveyor located the well and septic for us. They are well within the center of the lot and will not be disturbed or affected in any case by the lot line adjustment. The range remains adequate, the size is adequate for the town's regulations, and I believe it meets all other requirements. Again, it's a full lot line adjustment, and I will go into the details as to why, how it became in the next application, unless you want to know.
So, I guess Blair, I know, I think you looked at this, did you want to touch upon? Did you do a staff review specifically for this, or did you combine them with?
I commented on them both together.
Okay.
So.
Was there any specific comments related to the?
I had a chance to speak with Scott about it, and so, there wasn't, you know, he clarified to me the part that's going to be up against the road will have an infiltration pond on it, that's largely the, so, the point of it. So, it was just to clarify that that was something that needed an easement, and since it's going to be now their land, it doesn't, it doesn't need an easement, and it's going to, that lot will be, lot 18 will be an open space parcel. So there'll be some questions about that piece to discuss, but by and large, nothing specific to this. I did mention that it, the proposed lot line deviates from the road arc, but still, it creates this little wedge in here, but I guess what they're doing with the subsequent subdivisions is that that new road will actually track along where that line is proposed, come up and around this. So, it now makes sense. At the time, I just wanted to, I left it in there because we talked about it, and maybe you could clarify it a little bit on the final plans. About what's being abandoned and what's staying, I guess you could say.
Alright, and so, before we get to acceptance, just because I want to make sure I understand the procedure here, the intent here is really the timing of having the LLA kind of hopefully approved prior to obviously the larger subdivision that really depends on the swamp, right? Is that why it was broken, is that why it was kind of broken out?
Concurrent?
Yeah, okay.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Joe, if anything were to happen with the project, would this be needed? So, a final decision, if we could.
Okay.
Keep it continuing until the.
Okay, that was, yeah, that's why, I just want to make sure, so, that's clear to the boards, there, essentially, we do have a request here to review this LLA application, a subdivision concurrently. I believe we did have, was it two separate applications?
Yes.
Yeah, so I think what we can do is still act on the applications separately, but we can act on them concurrently once we've accepted both.
Could we make a conditional approval, conditioned on the?
You can, well, when you have, we do have concurrent approval, so at that point, really, it is two separate applications, so, or the way it's been presented, so we can accept them independently, and then.
And I think we should.
Discuss, and then, they can be, with the concurrent too, it's actually easier to have conditions that cover a piece of the project or not.
But they're two separate applications, I think doing them currently makes it messier. Because then it's like, so what application are you really talking about? It's lot line adjustment is lot line adjustment. Period. The subdivision is a separate piece. And I think that they have to be filed separately with the county. Yeah. They're two different, two different deeds.
Yeah, oh, when you get to the point of recording, there would be, yeah, you'd have to figure out.
And the lot line adjustment has to precede the other.
Correct, but I think the point being made, so we do have, in our regulations, we do allow for concurrent review of projects. Sometimes it's concurrent subdivision in site plan, but, although, that's probably the most common. Yeah, when it comes to recording, yeah, normally it says this plan needs to be recorded first, and then let the attorneys figure out.
No sense in going forward with the subdivision if the lot line is a major part of that? Because if we say no, then he's not going through with it, right?
We can't say no to a lot line adjustment.
Just saying. So.
Yeah, it's, yeah, so, the lot line adjustment in this case is more of a formality, in this case, with the agreement they've made with that other landowner, and it relates, because the whole reason, and I know we'll get into more details, the whole reason that will, like, it is the shape it is, is because of the sub, and then they've said, you know, if the subdivision doesn't get approved, then they would, the LLA wouldn't be needed. There's a whole reason for the lot line adjustment in that agreement. So, by doing it concurrently, is if the board chose to deny the subdivision, they would also not then want us to approve the lot. It is, I'll be honest, I've never seen a lot line adjustment and a subdivision put together concurrently, but you can do it. It's not common. Alright, so, again, we're, at this point, we're trying to determine.
Why aren't we doing the subdivision first?
I mean, I think it was the way it was submitted, so technically, it's come first. Well, at this point too, we're accepting the application. Once the applications are accepted, concurrent discussion, and you can talk about the project as a whole. But we do have two applications before us, and then essentially, if they both get accepted, then they're under concurrent review, and you can talk about the project without that barrier.
But we haven't accepted either.
Correct, so, we'd have to get through the acceptance process on both of them.
So Ian, I have a kind of a what-if question.
Yep.
So what if, as we're going through the subdivision plan, we say, well, the lot line should be adjusted.
On the lot line adjustment?
On the lot line adjustment.
Yeah, so I think that would be, once we have accepted the application as complete and can discuss it, just like any lot line adjustment, we can provide comment as to something that we see regarding regulations. So with that, I'd look for a motion to either accept as complete. Again, this allows us to further discuss the project with the applicant in further detail. But what's been provided to us, and again, this is for the lot line adjustment portion, which I believe is one of the.
This is just to set the application as complete?
Just the application.
Approving, just for clarification to folks.
That's correct, we have to accept the application as complete prior to.
So I'll make a motion that we accept case 24001, LLA Falzone, Raymond Road, as complete. Second?
Second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Before we forget, does anybody want to make a motion to the second piece of DRI? Discuss it too? Again, this is just for the lot line adjustment portion.
With a lot line, so I'll make a motion that it's not a regional impact. I'll second.
All those in favor, this is not, the LLA application is not a development of regional impact, say aye?
Aye.
Ananamous? So the LLA application is accepted, so I guess at this point, would you like us to just try and move to the subdivision? Accept that, or you think it probably makes the most sense if we want to get into the concurrent discussion?
I think so, I think that would be clear, Ms. Chairman.
Does anybody want to hear anything further as a very brief overview on the next application subdivision, before we discuss acceptance of that? I'll read it into the record though first. So concurrently with this, with this project, we have a case number 24-002, SUB Falzone, Raymond Road. Application from Joseph Falzone on behalf of the Forgotten Mountain Realty Trust, requesting approval for a 16-lot, open space subdivision off Raymond Road in Nottingham, New Hampshire. The properties are identified as tax map 69, lots 17 and 19. Was there anything further you wanted to add before we get to acceptance or not? So I guess amongst the board in terms of, well, actually, first I'll go to Blair, was there anything on the subdivision in terms of acceptance that you saw?
No, they are not asking for any waivers. All the documentation appears to be there, it was brought to my attention that, I think it was in the subdivision application, that there was a reference to CDI attached for the butters list, but it wasn't attached to the Raymond, the town of Raymond. But that was, that was about it, otherwise, the application did. In terms of acceptance.
Anybody at the board level have any, after review, have any questions or comments regarding completeness of the application? Alright, does anybody want to make a motion for acceptance? Just again, to accept the application as complete.
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept case 24-002, SUB as complete.
I'll second that.
Alright, we have a first and a second. First to, second to. All those in favor of accepting the application as complete, say aye? Ananamous? Next piece of acceptance.
I'd like to move that this case number 24-002, SUB is a subdivision application of regional impact.
Yeah, so, as part of that, do you want to include the items as to why we have to provide? This is part of it too, if the board votes yes on DRI, we have to notify the necessary parties as to the topics. I do have a document that I can, that Ed shared.
Do you want that included in the motion?
Yeah, yeah, we have to include it as to the findings of fact as to why we believe it is.
Yeah, the reasons for and who are being pulled in as a butters.
Correct.
Okay. The reason that this is a case of regional impact is because of fire and emergency response. The fact that it is close to the Raymond line. fire and emergency response. Um, the fact that it is close to the Raymond line.
Okay, so...
And it would be increasing traffic.
Considerably on 156.
All right, so emergency services? And when you say proximity to Raymond, are you saying just due to general impact to the abutting town, or like prox, due to proximity to the...
I, I recall that there was an abutter or, or someone close by who lived in Raymond, and he commented, this project, probably in my...
And then, um, I believe, if you'll accept it, I think Teresa asked, uh, mentioned increased traffic.
Yes, definitely.
Okay, um, and then so the next piece is to choose who we believe would, um, so Raymond likely was notified as an abutter, I believe, but we would as part of this, not just generic abutter notification they receive, essentially the same DRI notification we've received from them. I assume Raymond?
Yes, would you have a mona note if they do?
Um, and then just so everybody understands, so there's been a motion that this product's been, that this project be aimed at project, uh, development of regional impact, um, for those here tonight. Um, it's a process that oftentimes, if there's a larger project, whether it's a commercial site plan or subdivision, uh, and this is all laid out under state statute, is that if it's believed that this project will not only have potential impact on the town in which it lies, but surrounding towns, um, if it's big enough, countywide, that we provide adjacent towns the ability to act as a abutters in the case and provide comment. We receive notification from other towns on applications pretty frequently, so there's, we have to say why we believe it is, and, um, and specify who we believe should be granted a butter status, so, um, we've actually had this happen recent, a couple times in the last year, so. I have, uh, in terms of the, just to confirm, the reasoning for DRI, uh, increase on emergency services, uh, impact, proximity to Raymond, um, really abutting properties in an adjacent town, um, and increased traffic, and the, and we would be sending this to the town of Raymond. Um, with that, um...
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Yep, we did have, I think we had Sue and Teresa, you seconded, right?
Correct.
All right, so we have a motion, um, and a second. All those in favor of, uh, yes to regional, uh, DRI, development of regional impact, uh, raise your hand. Say aye.
Aye.
All right, that's unanimous. Um, so procedurally, um, we actually had this happen a couple times in the past. Um, we have confirmed in the past, if you read the language of the DRI to the letter of the law, you're supposed to stop the meeting after a DRI, but we did get some additional feedback that, um, obviously people come to the meetings, the intent here is to try and get as much out and open as possible, so, um, the per policy we've passed, and we did confirmation it's acceptable, essentially to continue on with the meeting, discussion with the applicant, the, uh, we would open the public hearing, um, I don't want people to waste their time coming here tonight, but it's understood that the public hearing will be continued, uh, because we do need to now allow Raymond to come, uh, under a butter status, and as part of that, uh, it is generally recommended that there's no action taken on, essentially votes by the board, except to continue a meeting, so if there, there are no waivers currently before the board, but there will be no votes tonight, uh, yes, no, um, anything on the project tonight, we do need to continue the public hearing, but we'll continue as, as planned. Um, so I'll work with Ed, I think we've got that template we've used for DRI in the past, that we can get to Raymond. All right, so now that we've got those, so again, we've accepted, um, both applications and made decisions on DRI, so at this point, both the LLA and the subdivision applications are accepted, and at the applicant's request, and I think the board's on board, is, um, we are going to be, we can look at these concurrently, so. Um, at this point, I'll bring it back, and, uh, feel free to give us more information if you'd like, before we, um, dive into some comments.
Great. Uh, thank you very much for clarifying all that, Mr. Chairman. Uh, again, for the record, my name is Scott Paul from Bill's Associates. Here with me is Joseph Falzone, the developer, and we also have attorney, Dr. Tim Phoenix, as part of the project team. Here on map 69, lot 17, I'll see with you at the previous meeting, we were here a few months back for design review. Notify the board, Joe is looking at developing this property, some commentary that we've had, tried to implement it into our homework in design. Uh, since the design review hearing, we have gotten all the survey data, got all the mathematical aspects of the job, and actually created and fine tuned our proposal. So we have an existing lot here, it's derived of basically 93 acres. To orient everyone, the dark line going across the top, which bounds the property, is the Mituckaway River. As I said, this is derived of, uh, basically 93 acres, and I'll see if I can clarify as much as I can. Um, preceding, following the design review hearing, there's some legal review of the project, including, I believe, with the chairman and the town's legal counsel. We have the 93 acre parcel which is here. There's also two existing approved town lots, which are not shown on the town tax map. And our lots 17A are related to, is this lot here, this is existing, right away left by the... We have relocated the right of way around that, and in, as in such, lot 17 remains, but lot 18 now has been combined with the land out back. We have one existing town lot that will remain, the rest is being included in the subdivision.
So 17, lot...
Yes. So here is our conventional layout, which is required, prove out conventional lots numerically. If everybody recalls, originally we had 20, now down to 16 based on the town criteria for development, tracking all steep slopes, wetlands in there. We brought us over two acres in size. This is our yield plan, they'll be on separate wells. They all have, uh, I tried to make as clear as I could, um, the amount of the buildable area that's required on the conventional lots. Um, I think I did this on Stevens Hill Road. I blacked out basically an envelope of the 30,000, uh, required square feet on each lot, so you can clearly see that that's provided in each one. Um, so again, this is our full build out conventional plan, not what we intend to build, but what we have to do to meet the requirements. Proposal here is an open space subdivision?
Yeah, we took a poll.
Yep, yeah, if they question. So we have a proposed open space subdivision here, again, showing 16 lots and one existing pre-approved lot 17. Uh, we are doing it in a open space subdivision with a proposed cul-de-sac roadway. The roadway itself is 2,200 feet, which would be all the way around the town criteria bulb. It's 1,700 to the throw. So a straight shot is roughly 1,800. As I said, we've got 16 lots, they're more or less an average of one acre in size. So we have the open space component, required open space based on the lot criteria would be 42.6 acres. We are providing 63 acres, with 33 of that being buildable, far more, roughly 150% above what would be required for buildable area within the open space. From the top of the plan, as I said, is the Mituckaway River on this colored plan here in Chilwell. That is a higher order stream by the state and by the town, the third order stream, which requires, uh, at least a 75-foot north stretch in fact. Our closest disturbance to that would be 130 feet. This place, we could suit it based on the elevations in the drainage system. However, the overall distance for any structure to that would be approximately 350 feet. More or less a 350-foot buffer compared to residential use from the river. For the open space and access to the town, we provided two different paths, uh, part of the open space and feet, so the town or the residents of this subdivision want to access that open space, they can. During its design, we have a curbed roadway system, so we would have catch basins and pipes leading to a number of infiltration basins that would slow down the water, treat it, and infiltrate it, and meet state criteria. For fire protection, Joe has spoken with the fire department, it would be proposed to have all the houses be sprinkled in this development, but believe that means that we do not have to have a system. State permits in this one would require, obviously, uh, AOT. Would need, um, individual town driveway permits, I believe. So that is our, um, our point for this design here, obviously the open space subdivision, conventional subdivision, which kind of doesn't leave anything. I believe that's it, and I'll try to answer any question you may have.
Or does... Comments?
Current lot line adjustment, if I see it, for the subdivision and site plan, C1 that includes the lot line.
Accepted both applications, and we are continuing. If you'd like to get further opinion from, on the town side, from, from our perspective, you can ask for that, because both of them are public hearings that have been noticed and we've accepted them.
I'm just saying, I was looking for what you said this year.
Yeah, there is concurrent site plan and subdivision, LLA and subdivision as well, plus uniform, lot line first.
Just looking.
You can ask. Um, does anybody want to, do anybody have any comments?
A couple of questions. Um, Ian, do you know if this has been sent to our engineers yet?
It has not. So that one of the items tonight is, um, normally we have to obviously make a motion to, I think we've, I'm not sure if we've, have we already sent this to CMA or no, and normally we... Correct, and then we, we ask them for a quote, I mean, Joe's been through it multiple times, so, um...
I just have some questions on the yield plan, that I'm just trying to, and then I think it looks like Ed had sent in some notes.
Correct, and I can read through Ed's comments. Um, I will say too, I mean, just again, procedurally, um, open space is encouraged oftentimes in terms of subdivision, um, within our regulations, um, versus conventional, uh, it is important that the first thing that the board focuses on is, is the yield plan, so that does lock in what can be actually used for the total lots on the open space layout, so. At some point, we will, again, not tonight, because we're not supposed to take any votes, um, at some point, we will look for a motion to accept the yield plan, that can be taken, not approving the project, just approving the yield plan.
I know.
So that's a piece of, of the subdivision, so. But whenever you're ready, Shirley, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, it's just on the yield plan, it looks like there's quite a bit of steep slopes that made up on the lots, um, one of, um... You know, along, along the road itself, um, the concerning areas, uh, kind of in front of what is lot 11, that whole area that runs right across that lot and into some of what is really steep. And then my, um, other question is, with lot, stay with me. All steep slopes surrounding it.
Well, lot number...
Lot 3 is all steep slopes, um... Yes, those are some of my concerns with the yield plan, and then just along the road there's, uh, it's five areas where it's pretty steep, um, that make up, kind of, what's been hit, road and yield.
Jessica, can I ask you what the numbers were that you presented to us initially? Um, you calculated, based on what your calculations were, that a minimum would be 42.6 acres, but your yield, what was the number that you said?
I'm sorry, for the open space?
Yeah, 60-something or...
So required open space based on the current parcel would be 42.6, but we are providing 63.
Oh, 63, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. For Charlene's comments, I would, well, just three, there's, it's a, the site has its challenges, um, a lot, especially like lot 3, if you look at it, if this were to be, to be built, and that's not the intent, um, especially along the front edge of lot 3 and the grades for the roadway, which we will see on the open space subdivision, it's more unlikely that the payment of that would all be regraded to less than steep slopes, so the access would be provided to lot 3. Um, so the, the idea being that they certainly could be constructed to provide that access as required. Um, you know, same thing on 10 and 11. Um, the, the smaller boulder text is the required amount of the 30K area, um, they both have, you know, the plus 30, so they're, they both have access to areas that are not steep slopes on the proposed roadway, so again, access could be provided. Um, again, we, Joe's choosing not to believe this, but it could be done, although there are expenses, but it could be done.
And this is, that's actually a good point too, because I've, when we see some of these, I look at, um, you know, in terms of determining the ability to show that, and, we don't specifically in our ordinance say you cannot impact, like a, a shall not or a must not impact. We encourage, essentially, the language is, we encourage avoiding hydroic soils, so wetlands, or, um, steep slopes, so. But we do not, we do require it to be discounted from buildable area, so. Do you have anything else, Charlene?
Uh, no, it's just, you know, I'm just questioning whether or not it's really that, if the yield plan is actually that in the lots. plan is actually that in the lots, given the amount of steep slopes in this area.
And one of the things I looked at, looking at that, I mean, I'm always kind of really focusing on that thirty K and the shape of it. I didn't see any areas that, I think we have a limitation that it can't go less than fifty foot, fifty foot hourglass effect, so I didn't see any of that. So that's one of the big factors, is you can have, obviously, odd shapes, but we can't have an hourglass effect with the thirty K, less than fifty, to try and, you know, get to a back area. So at first glance, I know it did look to me that they met it in that sense. That's why some of these lots are shown so large, to be able to get that. And in terms of the yield plan, the larger the lots, the less lots you tend to end up with in the yield.
And honestly, that's the reason why the reduction from the twenties, because I wound up with areas like that, I knew they weren't going to be...
It was a controlling factor, yeah. Okay. Is there anything else, Charlene, or?
I have a couple of questions, just for clarification. On sheet four, are those two rental pools that are illustrated, one's on seventeen A and the other's on lot eighteen, or the perennial wetlands?
On sheet four?
Sheet four of thirteen.
Essentially, those ones, the wetland, the small pocket wetlands on either side, do you kind of come up with the existing right away?
So the perennial wetlands, so, okay. And then I have another question.
Did I go with my, gove and my, environmental services do the...
I can't read.
We had gove, environmental services do the wetland study.
Oh, gove, okay, thank you. And then also on sheet six, this is for my own interest, you show an easement to control a beaver dam. Is that a permanent structure, or is that a dam made by beavers? Okay, could you find out?
I think that's an existing easement. It's not proposed, so I can certainly find that out.
Per reference plan one.
Yeah, but that would...
The beaver pond, beaver dam way down at the bottom there, I don't...
Yeah, that would impact, okay, because it would impact the wetland that's in the open space.
Yeah.
See what the terms are of that, what it is and what the terms are.
Actually, I didn't see, Dusset has a note seeing plan reference number one, so it's on record with another plan, but we will investigate that for you.
Yeah, it's per, looks like it's, it refers plan reference one, so it's eleven lots for Potawatka Associates from nineteen seventy-eight, so I think that must have been the division of all those lots on Raymond Road. Is there anything else, Sue, or is that, don't be your last opportunity, so?
I'm good for now.
Anybody else?
Unless I'm not.
I had some pretty detailed notes and questions, but some of these, I think, similarly to how we dealt with the hourage, it was more so specific requirements and compliance with them. I think in the past, what I'll do is I just share this with Alana, and just, rather than read out fifteen bullet points with questions, I'll let you respond, and that worked well in that application, just respond accordingly, as you normally will see on that.
Yep.
Regarding the...
Sorry.
Yeah, regarding the application, though, one I was wondering, and this is something that I again wanted to bring to the board, is with any subdivision, or I believe it's major subdivision four or more lots, the board needs to discuss if there's a need for an environmental impact study. The, and we do lay out the criteria, I think it's about five or six criteria. So a lot of times, this is providing a wetland summary or whatever, which I know gove sometimes or usually does. I can pull it up if anybody's curious what the requirements are. And the reason I mention this is we've, we've required it...
Yeah, well, I think, given the proximity to, to the lake and the river, and then just the amount of steep slopes, I think it makes sense.
So this is section ten point six under the subdivision regulations. In projects involving a major subdivision four or more lots, or where on the determination of the board, a significant impact to critical areas or natural resources is proposed, environmental impact assessment may be required. So the key terminology there is significant impact to critical areas. So in the past, we have, we do, or natural resource courses, we do define steep slopes in many areas, we deem those, we have deemed those kind of critical areas, and obviously the size of, the amount of steep slopes here, so. And also, the board, again, can just, is requested as part of it, if the board determines we can request it as part of it. So the items that the, we lay out that need to be looked at are soils and geology, topography, vegetation, fish and wildlife, wetlands, surface, groundwater quality and quantity, and it just says, any other environmental factors deemed necessary for study by the board. Some of this, too, I know if you're going for AOT, you've already seen the pictures of the turtles on there, so you've already had to do some of the work on fish and wildlife. At least my, my feeling is, I know there's no direct wetland impacts, which is always good to see, but the size of the steep slopes, I mean, that will have an impact on development, and it is going to make development and construction on the site difficult, so I would like to see specifically just how, I know, I think you might have touched upon this a little bit in the drainage analysis, and summary of erosion control is, just kind of breaking out, you know, how this proposed design, we feel, is going to honor, trying to work around those elements, because there is a lot of steep slopes on the site, so. We can either make a motion, or if you guys are willing to do the impact, I can make a motion, or if you want to do the environmental impact assessment, that's fine.
I don't, we don't have a problem with that, because we've already done a lot of work with Jim Gove.
Yeah, I think most of the work, yeah.
We already got the state's feedback.
Okay, good, yeah. All right, so, that's good. So I would, I would like to see that as part of this.
I would like to ask two things.
Sure.
Just so people that are here, that may not have been here, is the board, based upon the advice of town council, and your vote, is we don't have to comply with the twenty-five foot setback on the road. My attorney sent information, and that went to your attorney, and that's out. And regarding the review of this project, under RSA six seventy-six point four dash B, we're going to request that you have three consultant engineers, you can up to three consultant engineers that you hire to give a proposal, because we want to make sure price-wise it's right, and they qualify.
Okay.
In doing that, you get an extra forty-five days on your sixty-five days. So to save you some time, tomorrow, Monday, I'll send you over the RSA.
Yep.
I see multiple, or in the past, over the last twenty-two years, you've used different consultant engineers, but have changed.
Yep.
Of course, there's not going to be a consultant engineer that I use.
Yeah.
But we're definitely going to request that, and that will have to be done before you send this out to an engineer.
Sure, and that's, right, and that's, so part of it, our stand, so our, I'm not sure how the contract, sorry, but our stand, our town engineer, contracted town engineer is CMA, but that RSA does allow for an applicant to request additional proposals for, specifically for the peer reviewer project, so.
And it doesn't mean we won't go with him.
Right.
But I'm going into some towns now that, you know, when things ten thousand dollars and the other guy's twenty thousand dollars, I'm not taking the twenty thousand dollar guy.
Yep.
Taking the ten thousand dollar guy. It's too expensive.
Yep, no, I know, yep, that's allowed under state RSA, so if you could just forward the RSA to Alana, we might have to talk to Ellen, because we are going to have to, I mean, CMA provides the proposal to us anyway, they don't just start, but we're going to have to essentially put it, we can look who the town historically has used, and see if they're interested in also providing a proposal, but we will need to reach out to two additional engineering firms.
I mean, you used Barry at one time years ago, didn't you?
We have, yep.
I've never used him.
Yep.
I saw, who was the other one we saw?
I don't recall.
Some of it will have the, some of the two, the reason I say we'll talk to Ellen, too, is we also have to make sure conflict of interest where, we actually do have a current application from Barry Engineering doing a subdivision, so normally, a peer reviewer...
It's not on board.
You're not allowed to present applications to your own town if you're contract, so we'll figure that, we'll figure out the details.
Whatever it is.
Yeah, we'll figure out the details and we'll get that, yep, no problem.
What was that RSA, that six seventy-six what?
Six seventy-six colon four dash B.
Ian, do we have a standard scope of work?
Yeah, is it a blurb we send out to Alana, or we just pass it on and say, hey?
Yeah, no, actually...
Yeah, we can, I think we, well, we will. If we're going to go to somebody that we haven't worked with a while, we will have to make sure we define a scope of work. As a board, too, we can, that may be something we should discuss before moving on tonight, is the scope of work, keeping in mind what other permits and reviews they're going to be getting at the state level as well.
You won't be reviewing the state road.
I'm thinking more so you try and sometimes not have two, the state reviewing your stormwater design for compliance, and then having a peer reviewer, and then it's, it's a waste of time and resources. So I don't have a problem with that. We'll do that before we continue the meeting tonight, we'll work on that scope, so it's in minutes. And I'm just trying to pull up the ones that I think maybe affect more so additions to the application. Environmental impact assessment. Okay, so one of them, I know there's no waivers requested. Section nine point seven point one of our subdivision regulations, that's streets and roads. One B under that is road layout. Cul-de-sac shall be permitted by the granting of a waiver by the board, so there will be a class for cul-de-sac.
Not by right anymore?
It's, it's, yeah, it's always, it's always been in there, the, the use of a cul-de-sac requires a waiver. On the same front, I just, and this is something, is, I wrote down a note that there was no CUP, submitted a conditional use permit. The proposed lots all exceed, I think, forty-five thousand square feet under the open space layout.
Yes.
The regulation, the open space development regulations limit the lots, the minimum lot size is thirty thousand, the maximum lot size is a hundred and fifty percent, so forty-five thousand. The reason I bring this up is because this just came up on another application, another open space application, that, and I can, I can read the language for you, because I've, in this meeting, we've read it multiple times. Let me read you the, I'm going to read this, the article out to you, just so you know where this is coming from. So this is article, I'm back now to the zoning ordinance, so this is article S, which is open space development, and governs all the open space development. S eight, so eight is standards and conditions, under eight, B, alternative lot sizing. So this is one where, alternative lot sizing, the planning board may authorize variations from the minimum lot size specified above by condition applied to planning board determines following, applied to D E S requirements for subsurface wastewater, and abstractions in design standards of this article, and the sediments and rigs are otherwise achieved. So just above that is the dimensional table for open space development, and the minimum lot area is thirty thousand, and the maximum is a hundred and fifty percent of that, so forty-five thousand. So we just had a case where we, and we did get opinion on this from town council, that if you read the terminology literally, is that we can grant a conditional use permit from the minimum, but we can't issue a conditional use permit to the maximum. And that's why an application in town, an active one actually now, had to go get a variance for that max lot size. This issue also came up on a, I can talk about, because it's approved, the Moore's Road subdivision that was approved last year. That applicant chose to reduce down to that thirty to forty-five, because they also were greater than forty-five. So I just bring that up, because that has come up. The boards identify, we've had to read it multiple times, and we had to send that out for legal opinion. If you read the subsections here, the opinion that we got was, say where we can grant conditional use permit, particularly under some of these subletters, and the opinion that we got is, we can only grant conditional use permits for what we say we can grant in here, it's not an overarching. And Ed actually, if there's questions on that, I know Ed was more in conversation with town council on that, so I'm sure we'd be happy to, to do that. But I know, at least from lot sizing, we did just, applicant was required to get a variance for lot sizing greater than forty-five thousand square feet.
You know the reasoning behind that? With an individual septic and well, especially with the wells, that's really small.
It's, yeah, it's not, I don't think it's really, you know, the thirty thousand, whenever this is written, was to provide for the wells and septics, and I think the idea was that they didn't want somebody using some of the benefits of the open space, say the smaller setbacks, but then coming in with two acre lots under open space. So the goal there is to try and keep the lot sizes smaller, so that you're not having somebody just do a, a standard, and then just taking the, the benefits of smaller setbacks, that kind of thing, so. There was, we can talk to Ed, there was some information provided by town council, I'm sure we can, we'll have to go through the proper channels to make sure we can share it, but there was some summary provided to us on that, so.
Now, in an open space subdivision, you can do sheed septic systems, correct?
I have to double check, I don't think we prohibit it, you can, yeah. You can do a community system if you so choose.
Yeah, usually utilities are allowed within the open space, so if we have to make every lot smaller, well's are allowed in the open space. We'll, we'll look at that.
Okay. That was, that's really at the most, my other comments, again, I'll have Alana post them, I don't have a problem, she's posted them right on the page in the path, it's more so questions as to what some elements of the plan are, some requests, so I'll just have those posted, I won't bore everybody with that tonight. Does anybody else have anything else? I know Ed had some comments, if you guys think I should read those in.
There was, there was a couple I was going to suggest.
Go ahead.
From Ed.
Yep.
I know we, we talked about the Sherlene water quality, so that's going to require notification of land brading, sort of advisory, that was mentioned.
Actually, we'll receive notification, I believe, of the...
Okay.
Well, we haven't done that application.
They will, right, yeah, they, they do receive notification.
Have not, as of yet.
Confirm that the non-buildable areas, such as the drainage easements, are, are not included in the lot envelope sizing, so.
That would be on the open space layout?
Yes. I would...
Well, it's different.
Yeah, because if it's part, yeah, because if it's part of the, if he's... Drainage easements only appear on the open space layout.
I assume he's referring potentially to the thirty thousand square feet, but that doesn't apply under the open space regulations. Because we have a thirty thousand... Yeah.
Yeah.
So if there was existing easements under the yield plan layout, we would need to make sure those are discounted, but there were.
I think that's what he's speaking about.
Right, but that's not shown on there. They didn't build, I'm sure you didn't design out the yield plan with drainage easements and stuff.
No.
No, I don't, yeah.
Oh, no, he's referencing...
Why are you always watching over the site?
He's referencing the open space development. Locate buildings and structures on those portions of the site that are most appropriate for development. And avoiding areas that are not suitable.
Yeah, well, that's where I'm confused, he's using the term lot envelope, which, under our definition of lot envelope, is the thirty thousand square foot requirement. But that thirty thousand square foot buildable requirement is not applicable under the open space, once you move to an open space layout, it's not applicable. It does apply to the yield plan, just like any other subdivision one. I think his other points are valid.
He's calling section three F.
Yeah, once we get through Ed's, I think we're gonna move to public comment, and that'll probably be the last. Correct, yep. We'll do, we'll do public hearing, and if people choose to leave, but we're gonna schedule a site visit and discuss the scope of work. I don't see three F referring to that.
I don't know that we'll get into the site. I've got some kayaks, use those.
Base tips?
Ice.
That's one I think, I mean, I think that third point, we can just get some clarification from Ed on that, just to make sure we're.
Yep.
I'm interpreting it that he's referring to the thirty K, but that doesn't apply to the open space and.
No, I see what you're saying.
We can get a clarification from that, on that.
Yeah.
So we'll just put a pin in that one. That was it, those are the ones that I wanted to call out now, so you can start thinking about them.
There was one, and again, this is some, Ed emailed some comments. Both of us, this'll likely be posted online or forwarded to you directly.
And how far in the distance will we get this list, just so we could work on it?
Like mine, I'll probably send Alana the PDF tonight, and this, you might get, if it's not already been forwarded, I'm sure Alana can forward comments from Ed tonight, or tomorrow, whenever she's in the office. The only one that, and this is, I'm glad Ed did this, is the plan reference D twenty-one two seventy, I believe that was the old subdivision. So Ed says, "Plan reference D twenty-one two seventy should have no bearing on this application, as that was revoked by the planning board previously." Somewhere in my notes, I had a question, is, and this partially goes to the LLA, and the tax maps don't show any lots back there. Are the lots eighteen and seventeen A, are those separate from the subdivision that was revoked?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
And it's recorded at the registry.
Okay, all right. Yeah, because I know that was a discrepancy, but then I did see that it's recorded, just our GIS and tax maps don't show it, okay. Same thing, some of it is just, again, questions on the plans and clarifications he's asked, so we'll forward these to, to you guys, and they will be posted online as well. Does anybody else on the board level have anything they wanna get out there tonight with their goal being that the applicant can work on additional information? Okay. At this point, we'll open the public hearing, we have accepted both LLA and the subdivision, in the spirit of trying to keep them separate, maybe we'll get some clarification. I'm gonna open the public hearing for case twenty-four dash zero zero one LLA, so just so make sure we're clear. Does anybody from the public for, against, or just general comment on the lot line adjustment application? Again, this is not the sixteen lot subdivision. Seeing nobody. I will keep the public hearing open, because again, we're gonna be continuing this. Okay, so now, is there anybody in the public that would like to speak for, against, or general comment on the case number twenty-four dash zero zero two S U B, the sixteen lot subdivision? Is there anybody from the public that would like to come up to the table and speak? Sure. Would you guys mind just stepping in, we'll just, we'll have you back up here before we continue to a date certain. And when you come to the table, if you could just state your name and, name and address, please.
Hi, Jim Stevens, thirteen Dolofdam Road, I'm in a butter. I just want to implore the board to use the extent of the subdivision requirements. I don't think that the plan submitted adequately, you mentioned the environmental impact assessment. On the plans already referenced numerous endangered species. I forget what they call them specifically, vivarias, species of interest on the site. We feel the traffic impact analysis is warranted for this lot, the subdivision where it is with the, the way traffic is on the road currently. So it would be, I'd certainly like to see that get done. I'm, I had some confusion in looking at the drainage analysis, it references specifically that a alteration of terrain permit would be necessary. And then on the drawings, the note contradicts that and specifically says that it's not required, because it's less than a hundred thousand square feet. I'm not sure where that less than a hundred thousand. Thousand square feet. I don't know if the board can clarify that, or if they can be. The whole area looks like it's listed as an area of high environmental value on the state maps. And so, in accordance with the Nottingham master plan, I don't think the subdivision meets many of the requirements in our master plan from the environmental impact on the area, the sensitive and critical nature, the, you know, steep slopes, the impact of the watershed, not just from the development, but from future, you know, salting roads, things of that nature, all noted in the master plan. And, you know, again, I don't feel adequately noted in the drawing. So the other last piece, this is low hanging fruit, but I was confused on block four, you know, the drainage head wall and rip rap. You know, that would be clearly be seen from Dolofdam Road. One of the notes in the plan is, for butter standards, is, you know, unsightliness. So right now, we have a sloping down to the river that's, you know, pristine woods, and now we're gonna have drainage structures there. There's notes in there about maintenance, I'm a little confused about who maintains those structures in the future. They get filled with leaves, don't get dredged out, and then we got runoff running down the hill into the Takaway River, so. Those are just a few of my concerns, and I just implore the board to use the extent of the standing regulations to put this through the rigor it deserves. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to make comment for, against, general comment? All right. Again, we're gonna keep the public hearing open on this piece. You guys can come back up, is there anything on that that you'd wanna address?
Oh, yeah, a couple notes on that.
Sure.
The gentleman is correct, I do apologize, there was an error, carryover note on sheet sixteen. When you know this is above a hundred thousand, it will go to AOT, I will actually change that note. In reference to traffic, it may not be posted yet, but as part of the application, there was a full traffic analysis provided from Vanessa Associates. So that is actually within the town hall, as we screen. So if the butter wants to go get a copy of that, he can do so. And other than that, you know, as normal course, a full drainage analysis was provided and will be reviewed by the future review engineer. We'll wait to see what he say.
Okay. And then, there was the comment about maintenance, I know this has been discussed, I assume at some point there'll be a declaration of covenant and clearly laying out who's responsible for what. The town's policy is that, you know, obviously, we don't have the resources to maintain a bunch of stormwater ponds, so generally, the, a roadway is designed, or, you know, it's proposed to a town standard, being that it could be accepted in the future as a town road. It does need to go to town vote, any road that's. The ponds, though, the standard practice is that the HOA over the subdivision maintains the ponds. And there's a declaration of covenants and association that covers all that. So that will be, we can, if that's something that, in the past, I think we've been getting those beforehand. Even in draft form, just to start getting.
It's been standard.
So that is, those are documents that we received. I was just looking to see on the website if, if the traffic was on there.
At the conditional use, you asked, you asked us to do a traffic study and gave us points to study.
Yep.
All of those have been done in the report.
I could that, I don't see anything excluded. I'm just looking all the attachments on there.
I put a note, just make sure the traffic analysis.
So if it's not, it could just be under one of these already, but if not, we can make sure that that is uploaded, so that anybody can access it on the website.
Did you submit that?
The, I was here for the first time to talk about this, and I might have missed in between, but then the Aquifer District looks like lots one, two, three, four, fifteen, and sixteen are in the Aquifer Protection. Going from yield to open space, did that get clarified? Because I think the Aquifer Protection Zone required a minimum lot size, but how does that swap over to the yield to open? I was looking at page, sheet sixteen, where the original disturbance of, you can see with the demarcation line for the Aquifer Zone.
Yeah, yeah.
Did that, I think Charlene asked the original question about that, that part of this particular zone is in, so then there was, there are regulations for that zone?
Certainly understands.
Is that this one?
This heavy dotted line?
Oh, no, that's.
Is the Aquifer Protection District, they actually go like.
That's just a.
Okay.
The majority of the parts is actually outside of it.
Okay, so now I misread the dotted line on this.
There's another one down here, that's the flood zone, so that doesn't get confused. The Aquifer Protection actually comes across like this.
So it affects that old.
Sort of.
Lot eighteen that's not there anymore.
Yeah, so this is this like squiggly.
Correct.
Yeah, so in the yield plan, it does fall on lot one, two.
Okay, but then those are.
You're correct, there is additional requirements, the lot falls under the Aquifer District, but the, pretty much, the biggest one there is three acre minimum, so that, those actually meet the three acre minimum as well. But no, thank you for pointing that out.
Okay. So again, public hearing will be continued, so I think the next steps, again, we voted on DRI, we'll get the DRI notification out. Charlene had mentioned a site walk, and then I just wanna make sure that we discuss the scope of work, because we are gonna be requesting additional proposals. And this is really a good principle anyway, for even your existing peer reviewer. First, we talked about the scope of work for the peer review, so generally, we have them do a review of the application versus the subdivision regulations. So it's really a general, like, you know, they oftentimes use the checklist as a reference tool and make sure that they are in fact complying. Or they highlight areas that maybe they don't feel that it's been met. Information. My opinion is, it's really the board's purview. If we, they generally will do stormwater on a project. I will note that this product does require alteration of terrain, so that means that this, stormwater systems have to be designed to the state standard, which is ninety-nine percent of the time, the most stringent standard versus a local municipality standard, certainly more stringent than our standards. So I don't know how the board feels, I think the reason there is, they already have to have a state reviewer look at this, and it's a very detailed review for the stormwater. Should we have the peer review do it as well? The reason I mention that is because things can be subjective, and I try and avoid somebody interpreting something differently, so. Where it's a state purview, my opinion is to leave it to the state.
Patient ponds. Be eliminated, added to, relocated, something that might affect layouts, road layouts, anything like that, culverts that are necessary. Exactly, I don't, there's no point in double handling them, but just making sure that at a high level, that they think like, yeah, generally speaking, without doing calculations, this is probably. I don't even know if it's, either you do it or you don't, I don't.
Yeah, I mean, certainly, when you submit a product for alterations of terrain review, they're going to give you comments, and it's not to say that some of their comments are not gonna force a change to the design. If that happens after we've given conditional approval, then they go back to substantive changes, right? If it forces the road to move, or, you know, moving lots around, that would require a renoticing and amendment to the approval.
Okay, so, all right, no, it's fine.
And you always get to see that prior to signing anything.
We, yeah, we get a copy of all that application as well, so we're always CC, the town is always CC'd on those state applications. Actually, Ed, I believe, gets, he gets CC'd on everything, so his inbox gets filled with all the wetland permits and everything.
Got you, okay.
So essentially, it's, the standard right on this would be compliance with the checklist, thereto the subdivision regulations. But I would, I guess, in a way, make a motion that we exclude review of the stormwater design from the peer review, again, because the state standard is more stringent than the town's. And that's been common practice, actually, the last subdivision.
Should we have motions at a time when we don't have representation from the abutters that live in Raymond?
Well, I think we don't really need to, we already have to send it out for peer review, so it's more so just the board defining, I don't think we need to take a vote on that, because.
Okay, that was my question.
It's a, really, it's a requirement that this be reviewed by the town peer review engineer, so. Really, I just wanna make sure we define that scope or exclude things from the scope, so that when we do work with Ellen, the town administrator, we're clear as to what we're asking for.
And so would we note on that scope of work that, because they're applying for an AOT, we don't want stormwater.
Yeah, we can note that, yeah.
Know that's why we're.
Yeah. And it's not to say, some peer reviewers can be like, well, I'm still gonna give a cursory look to make sure that nothing stands out, and that's fine, but we don't expect them to review a hundred and fifty page document when somebody at the DES office is gonna look at it even more thoroughly. So I think that's the only thing I'd recommend that we exclude from the scope.
Yeah, the only other question I had, Ian, and maybe it's like a timing thing, so we've asked for environmental impact studies, should we wait until that's done before we send all that to the engineers, so they have that as well?
I'll be honest, I think it's because we're gonna be asking for proposals from two more firms, there's already gonna be a delay to even the start of a peer review. My hope is that between now and whoever is chosen, that that impacts assessment can be provided.
So maybe if we're sending out, like, requests right now, we note that also, that there has been a request for an environmental impact study that.
Mm-hmm. Tell them what documents we expect for review?
Yeah.
Yep.
I think that would be good.
At what point do we bring in fire and police?
Well, actually, I think we've already forwarded, right? And I think, I saw, I saw a follow-up email, I don't know, did we receive any? Yeah. Okay.
How about the school? Are we considering the school at all, and even maybe the town Public Works, because if it ends up being a town road, they should.
We certainly, I know Public Works would have been provided, Alana provided email notification, now twice, the follow-up as well, asking if anybody had comments.
Okay, and the school?
Um, I don't think we send it as a standard to the school.
Yeah, that was actually in my email I put in there, that's a discussion that I was gonna, see if that's something I should start doing, sending it to somebody from the school board, or I had a recommendation from a resident that we should do it now.
The application document.
Yeah, I'm not sure, I think, I think they, they meant like.
I think it's more so they are a town entity, maybe not under the same umbrella entirely, but I don't think at first it's publicly available information that many of the people on the school board.
Yeah, that's.
I see Dale back there raising his hand.
So it's going on, but if they want me to email, then I just need to.
They need to be aware of what could potentially be coming in. To be planning for, what could possibly be coming in.
Knowing that is coming in, but I can't. What they, what, like, input they would give on an engineering plan as the school board.
Well, I think, I think what you're getting at in the past, we have seen that we can't, part of our narrative, or even they've expanded the environmental impact to be really more of a community impact. And there are ways to do projections based on industry standards of pupils per house.
Correct.
Those numbers are oftentimes argued for and against.
You could.
As the board, I mean, they're a town, associated with the town, obviously, so there's no harm, we can request input from them, it's like peppering the fire department to give us feedback, so.
Right.
I don't think there's any harm to doing that. Like, to Alana's point, we just have to figure out who, who's at the top of the chain, the contact. But Dale, did, sorry, did you have something, Dale?
That individual had reached out to me, and I can just shed a little bit more light on it, it was really in reference to, they were concerned about taxes increases.
Okay.
They reached out to the school, the school said they didn't know anything about this or any future self-developments. And talking to that individual, they requested from me if they could be notified as other department heads, that it would change anything, but just a more of sharing the knowledge so they could possibly prepare when they make their school budgets. That's what it was in reference to.
I mean, it's just, we can notify anybody really at the town level, so I don't think there's any harm. I, the only thing I would say is if we're going to just send them an email, I guess it would be a request of do they feel there's an impact because of sixteen homes? Never asked them to do that on an application.
But it isn't even just sixteen, when you add the sixteen to the other. Whatever that's coming in, Oak Street and all those, if they. Say there's like fifty to a hundred houses planning to be built in Nottingham over the next year or two or whatever, then they can start planning for that, but.
My suggestion would be, like, where do we fit this? It would be kind of in the CIP process, which, you know, just thinking out loud right now off the top of my head, you could, what we could do as a planning board is maybe every June, put together a report of, a summary of what came in in the last twelve months.
What's been approved for lots?
And, and send that to the CIP committee so that they have that in front of them. I mean, the school board must find out at some point in time, because they get the impact fees from it, but I think instead of sending it piecemeal, which will probably be.
This sounds more like a procedural thing is going forward, because we haven't notified them in the past.
Process that we have.
So it sounds like maybe I can talk to Ed about that, is how we build it into our town notification, internal notification process.
I just think that there's a lot more developing going on.
True.
Now, and it's impacting, or going to be impacting the town in major ways, just between roads, traffic, the use of all of the, the school, library, town hall, all of it. And people need to be, that are managing these departments, need to be made aware that, hey, this is another one coming in, do you want to come in and be a part of the discussion, do you want to see what's happening? I think, I think we owe that to them and the rest of the citizens.
Yeah, I mean, we've been in growth mode for many years now.
I know, but, but it, there's a. There's a lot more going on now than there was the last time I was on this board a few years ago, and I only had a few year. Gap between when I left and came back, and already we've had, like, three or four of these big developments coming in, and it's just, at some point, people are going to be like, what's going on?
Yeah, so we'll, I'll, I think it sounds more of a procedural question, so what I'll do is I'll talk with Ed, again, he's the one that generally connects with other town departments. At this, we'll establish. School board, something out of the blue. Date an application, give us your thoughts, that's a, that's too big, so we'll come up with.
Yeah, just a meat.
A blurb, again, that we could recycle in the future, so. I think we can do that, and this doesn't just apply to this application, we can do that for any application, really.
Correct.
Be a two lot subdivision that somebody for some reason feels really sensitive about. Okay. Okay, so we're going to do the review engineer scope description, I'll work on that with Ed. Next one, we can schedule a site walk.
Yeah.
Can I make a suggestion?
Go ahead.
When, and I forget your voice name.
Alana.
Alana? My mother-in-law's name, I won't. Gets a list together, for instance, of contractors, review, review engineers.
Yep.
She's got to tell me their names, because I might be working with them somewhere else, and you're going to want to know that.
Yeah, we're going to go through a list and figure out who has conflicts where and end up with two new people that nobody has a conflict with.
Yeah, exactly. And I can't get a survey out there for three or four weeks to stake the road, and there's no use of going out and walking the land if you don't walk.
Yeah, we usually like to see that.
So it might be wise to, depending upon when you're going to continue to meet it, probably into February, that we get this done, come to the February hearing, then do the site walk.
That's fine.
And maybe, maybe have that engineer walk it when you're out there with us.
Sometimes they do.
Yeah.
I mean, it makes sense.
I'm not opposed to that, and I mean, that was going to be my next question to you, is we usually push it to you and say, when do you want to come back?
Well, I guess, that depends if, I mean, it, it shouldn't be a hard process, there's plenty of engineering companies out there. I can give some names that I've never done business with, but I've seen at hearings, you must have a list of you've gotten.
Yeah, if you want to.
See who.
We're allowed to collaborate on the list, and essentially, we, it's like creating a jury in a way, so.
Can you email Alana and/or I the list of.
Yeah.
His you've worked with?
He's done.
And then she and I can.
Oh, the list of people I haven't worked with.
What's the smaller list?
That's the smaller list.
Okay.
Well, yeah, I guess it's not currently working with, I would imagine.
Yeah.
I was going to ask, in order to be efficient, now that it's been deemed regional impact, should we get feedback from whomever? But, you know, they may even want to be involved in, like, the site walk in the next meeting or something.
Right, so. I'm thinking at this point, I know we've got a big application at the January twenty-fourth meeting, I think we'd be looking at one of the February meetings to come back, and again, we'll post some of our internal comments that you could choose to respond.
Makes sense.
Potentially choose to provide an updated set prior to the selected review engineer getting it, and maybe that will kind of reduce.
Yeah.
Things they would look at.
Yeah.
So that would be looking at the February. Generally, we.
When we do a month, I, I just. To get it to us in time, to be able to get it to, to the board, so, though you can, you can work fast, be able to.
Because we usually ask for a week ahead of time, so you're in that two, depending on the calendar, it's two to three weeks to provide response, yeah.
Yeah.
That's why I usually leave it up to the applicant as to.
Well, I'm not here February twenty-eighth, so I'd either have to take February fourteenth, which gives us almost five weeks.
Yeah, and the reason I mention that, knowing the twenty-eighth, is the next opportunity is not till March twenty-seventh, because we have election of officers on the thirteenth.
Isn't on the fourteenth, we have the POC people coming in?
Officially noticed, I might have missed that in my email, yes. The only reason I wouldn't be objected to this is I think via this discussion, we know there's no votes being, like, we're not approving or denying this project on the fourteenth.
What time is, is it at seven o'clock? I'm just trying to think, I mean, we have no idea how long that will go, or how many people show up, and. They don't have to be here at seven o'clock, but, you know, I'm just.
Yeah.
That could go, that could go twenty minutes, or it could go two hours.
Like this one is almost.
Yeah, it depends on how many people show up and want to talk. I mean, we can, we can do it, and.
Yeah. It's up to you.
Yeah, I prefer February fourteenth, and I appreciate you saying, if you tell us to come at eight o'clock, we'll come at eight o'clock.
Yeah.
You know? Whatever time you want us here.
No, I was thinking the same thing on the table.
Do they have this all out? Chocolate hot, it's not squares.
Okay, so. All right, so it sounds like the last order of business on this, these applications tonight is to continue both, we should keep reference both applications. And look for a motion for continuance to.
All right, I'll do that. Make motion that we continue case twenty-four zero zero three, oh, sorry, no, Brahma, case, looking at the wrong form.
One eight.
Thank you. Case twenty-four zero zero one, lot line adjustment, falls on Raymond Road, and case twenty-four zero three two, S U B, falls on Raymond Road, due February fourteen, twenty-three, four, so. I'll second.
All right, first and second, to continue both applications to do February fourteenth. Twenty-three, planning board meeting is seven PM in this room, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, that's the beginning of this.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Right.
Is in the gym, okay. I don't think we want to hold up planning, but we still have this room, so I think if we're going to do an application like this, we're going to come in here.
The only question is, are we, are we recording that meeting in the, is all the recording, but it could be in the gym?
I don't think you can.
Okay, so that just won't be recorded?
I don't think it's going. Um, so those that are here from the public still for this, there won't be any additional mailing notifications of this, but keep tabs on the, the website, Alana updates the agenda. I do recommend the day of the fourteenth, check the website, because sometimes if we do get a request for continuance ahead of time, Alana will update the agenda, and it will say continuance requested on the agenda, so read the agenda.
If you want, I'll give it a shot.
Any other questions, feel free to feed them through Alana, they'll get to us. All right, thank you. Teresa, I am gonna, I'm gonna circle it on my end, the LLA and sub concurrent review.
Okay.
And what we'll do is we'll ask, I mean, I think the way we did it, where we did keep the application separate, is we could continue to, you know, to keep them separate if we needed to.
I looked and looked, page by page.
Yeah.
I didn't see it.
We might get the opinion, well, the LLA is a lesser application than a cycle, and they might just say, yep, you're kind of covered, but we'll ask.
Okay.
I circled it, it's the only thing.
Can we let them know that we still have shade?
Alana, can you just let them know that we're gonna continue on?
Thank you, I find it just too far to hear.
Yeah, you can't, you can't talk. Let's see, remember, this is the one I'm going to have to recuse myself from.
Yeah, but I'm not going to defer to Charlene.
That's fine, yeah, whoever wants it.
Picking and screaming. Unless she wants it, she's used to it.
I'm a direct abutter to this, so I can, I'm going to have to recuse myself.
Oh, okay.
Anybody at this point.
You guys don't want it?
She doesn't want it, she's not feeling up to it tonight.
Kindergarten.
You've got the experience.
I, well, I don't in this, but I do in zone. What's that?
I speak for the public.
Okay.
All right, good evening.
Good evening.
Um, I'll read this one in, and then I'll give my blurb, uh, this is. What's the case number on this one?
Twenty-four four zero zero three.
All right, let's read this one in.
It's not listed here.
Case number twenty-four zero zero three, LLA Nottingham Business Park, on Route four. Application for New Hampshire Land Consultants on behalf of Nottingham Business Park LLC, requesting a lot line adjustment. The properties are located on Route four in Nottingham, New Hampshire, and identified as tax map three, lot six, nine, and ten. Before we get into this, I will have to recuse myself on this one, I'm a direct abutter to the east on this, on this project, so Ms. Baskin's going to take over chair on this, this process.
Do we make a motion to put her, seat her as chair, I think so.
Yeah, I guess I can, I'll make a motion to seat Ms. Baskin as chair for this, for this application.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Just not smiling. Thank you, Teresa.
Thanks. Okay.
If there's any questions, just look out to a curtain.
All right, do you want to?
Sure, I can give a little presentation.
Please, thank you.
Okay. Scott Frank, with New Hampshire Land Consultants, Tom Moulton, the owner of Nottingham Business Park. We're here for a parcel, we were in here a couple of years ago for a change of use for a parcel. For a cabinet maker who's working out of the, out of the, out of the building right now. I'll go over what's existing out there right now and what, what our hope is for tonight. Currently, the lot is just over thirteen acres, and it has thirty, just over thirty, thirty feet of frontage along Route four. This green is the existing lot of record right now, for what we're really massaging the most. What our proposal is, so on this plan, the green is existing lot lines, the purple are proposed, and the red dashed lines are the ones that we're eliminating, emerging into the larger lots. So tax map three, lot six, which is the one to the top of the property, is currently seventy-six point six acres with fifteen hundred feet of frontage along Route four. The next lot, tax map three, lot nine, which is the middle lot, which we're doing the most adjusting to, currently is thirteen point four acres with just the thirty feet of frontage. And then the bottom lot, which has the big building, that USA Water, whoever it was, put that building up, and that's lot ten, and that's seventy-eight acres with seventeen hundred feet of frontage. So what we're proposing is to transfer nine point four two acres from lot nine, which is the, the middle lot, to lot six, which is the lot to the top or the north. So that will be merged into that lot, and then another transfer will happen out towards the road, which is that little triangular piece on Route four. It's point six acres, will come from lot ten and merge it into lot nine, and it will add a hundred and sixty-nine plus feet of frontage, giving that lot two, two hundred feet of frontage and five acres of land. So the result of all of it will be tax map three, lot six, which is the top one, will be just over eighty-six acres with the, no adjustment to the frontage, so they'll still have over fifteen hundred feet of frontage for that lot. Lot nine, like you said, with two feet, two hundred feet of frontage, and the bottom lot with the large building, partial building on it, lot ten will be seventy-seven point five nine acres with five hundred and thirty feet of frontage, or that's actually more than that, that number's wrong. Seventeen hundred feet of frontage, so it'll be fifteen thirty. Feet of frontage remaining with that. And, and that's all what we were trying to do with this tonight, there was one error on the plan that Blair pointed out, and it was the setback lines. I cleaned that up, and it's shown on this plan, so it's more clear. Other than that, we're not asking for any waivers, we're just trying to clean up this for a purpose of sale.
So the cleanup is on that sheet, but not on what we have?
No, the plans that we submitted, there were four sheets.
Right.
You get the cover sheet, and then an existing condition sheet, and then the second sheet, or third sheet, was a lot line adjustment with contours and all the information, and the proposed lot lines. And then the last sheet is the plan that would actually be recorded, showing the lot line adjustments.
I think what Charlene was asking, though, is the comments that Blair made on.
Right, okay.
Are those on the sheets that we? Are those on the sheets that we have?
They are on the sheets, and I can point them out. So it's clearer on the last sheet.
Sheet 4?
Sheet 4. And as you go back into the lot where we're making the lot 5 acres, you'll see the dark line about 750 feet back, just past the building. Just behind that, you'll see that square. Because this part of the land in the back is getting merged into lot 6 on the top, the upper 100-foot setback and upper 20-foot setback shouldn't have been shown on, on that. Is those, that lot line that those setbacks are from is being eliminated?
You're talking about the triangular piece on that?
I was talking about the...
That map, it goes this way compared to what I have in my hand. So these should actually go that way?
It goes just like that. The plan is just...
And that's the part that they're transferring, you know? He's talking about...
Okay.
On this, this northern one and that one don't exist anymore.
On the plan, you guys have this line here?
Yep.
Yes.
That's eliminated. This goes straight out?
Okay.
And then there was a line all along here. That gets eliminated. That's just supposed to go.
Okay.
There were setback lines. There weren't lot lines.
Alright, thank you. Um, Blair, anything?
No, uh, they're not asking for any waivers, um, and everything, uh, meets, uh, you know, the zoning, uh, to allow for lot line adjustment to go through, you know? The goal is to sell that parcel of land. What they're trying to do is give 200 feet of frontage to make it conforming, more conforming than it currently is despite it's, you know, we don't really typically like odd shaped lots, but at least it's getting it to the frontage that would bring it in line with zoning. So you can make an argument that it's making it more conforming, um, than it currently would be. It is an application to accept. Everything does, everything appears to have been submitted. And, um, like I said, they're not asking for any waivers, so I believe that you have everything in front of you to make a decision to, or to accept the application and review it.
Okay. Anybody have anything?
Do you want a motion to fix up the application?
If you have nothing else to add at this point, yes.
Um, I'll make a motion that we accept, uh, case 24-003, lot line adjustment Nottingham Business Park, um, application.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by, by Charlene, seconded by... Question, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 The application's been accepted. Any discussion?
Um, it looks like, do we want to go over some of Ed's notes here that he has?
Sure.
He has a couple of questions.
Is that for the last one?
No, he sent it today.
And it's in the, in the part of, in your folder. Last case.
You got it?
Yep, yep.
Okay, okay.
I thought it was for the last level.
I find it. Do you want to bring up any of it? Will I look for it?
Do you want me to read these?
Um, I got it. It's sheet EC1, right, did we talk about that? EC1 appears to be missing a lot line from map, lot 7 to Route 4, near driveway. Sheet EC1 appears to be missing map 3, lot 7.
It's missing the lot line from where lot 7 is, but up to where the driveway goes there.
Near driveway, he just...
Yeah, it's just on the wrong layer or whatever. Add it back in.
He asked, what is being transferred?
So... Six. Six to, six, yeah.
Say 9 to 10, or, or 10 to 9?
I don't know, he says 6 to 10.
Says 6 to 10, but nothing's being...
No, they were on opposite sides of the law, yeah.
Okay. They'll mention on plans of transfer from lot 9 to 10, triangle shaped area to provide additional frontage.
It appears to be the other way. Isn't that lot 10 to lot 9?
9, yeah, it is, yeah.
Yes.
And the areas noted on sheet 4, what's being transferred?
Yeah, 9 to 6. I'm just reading off what he's written here.
Yeah.
Existing lot may be pre-existing non-conforming. Non-conforming.
He just, he usually likes to mention that on lot line adjustments.
Yes, yes, which is important, actually.
So I did have one question on, um, on the lot with the buildings there. There's, um, there's a note for proposed, um, 50-foot access easement, and I was wondering, I wasn't sure what that was referring to. Is that referring to that it's, there's gonna be, that it will have access into what used to be the whole lot, that is, now it's on the lot.
Yeah, it's to retain the access from, for, for Tom to get from Route 4 to, he wanted to keep that access available. As you see, it goes along the existing driveway. There is no plan to upgrade it or anything at this time, and it would be more of an emerg, if, if he goes forward with the back land development, that would be more of an emergency access kind of.
Right, I think if I recall, on the conceptual, I mean, I think what you're doing here is what you had proposed in the conceptual one, the orange, um, that, um, this would be smaller and then kind of that back property would be like a connector road from...
The overall development?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I wasn't involved with it at that point.
Yeah.
I, I'm wondering what approximate wetlands means. Looking at, um, like the second, third, and fourth sheet, the back property has approximate wetlands. What does that mean?
Right, so, uh, we surveyed their property that we're trying, we're doing the lot line adjustment for, and those were wetlands that were shown on the original plan. And we located some of them in the field, some of them we didn't. So they are more or less what was there, but because we're not doing anything back there, we wanted to show them at least. And then when he, when Tom goes forward with anything else out back, then they'll be verified and done.
If I remember correctly, back in the day of USA Springs, there was a wetland that was disturbed, and part of the, um, proposal from the planning board was that wetland would be restored. But I have no idea if that ever happened.
Wasn't that, wasn't the restored wetland on this side of the, the skeleton structure, abutting kind of like in your eye area?
Yes, yes, no, yeah, you're right.
This is the large building, the side that's closest.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, Charlene.
Anyone else have anything?
Uh, yeah, so Ed and I had talked about this, and I was trying to find it. So those two, the middle two bullets, um, the confusion is that note one states that the purpose of the plan is an adjustment between lot 6 and 9 and 6 and 10. So it would appear that it's, it's note one on the different plans where it should say not 6 and 10, but 9 and 10 and 6 and 9, okay?
I see what you're saying now.
That's, I think that's what Ed was questioning. That, that kind of covers both of his comments, the second and third comments.
Yes. Do you see where he's talking?
Yep.
Okay. Anything else? Alright, um, why don't we open the public hearing? If you guys don't mind having a seat. I know that there's at least one person who wants to talk. Anyone for, for against?
Uh, Ian McKinnon, 19 Lincoln Drive. I'm surprised Blair didn't catch this one. Uh, for the subdivision regulations, there needs to be an intermediate pin on new lot lines in excess of 300 feet. Um, so there just needs to be, like, the two proposed lot lines are just, just over, so that's the only, you need to just have an intermediate pin for the subdivision regulations. Um, I think you already, uh, or Charlene had asked about it, was the intent of the 50-foot access easement, and I think it just needs to be kind of stated that it's not intended to be, that, that the board's not approving a plan with a 50-foot access easement with the idea that it might become a roadway, because currently it wouldn't meet any roadway standard, um, in terms of alignment and the principle of allowing a road through a property could actually make that law potentially non-conforming in the future. So just the intent there, it not, it being, I think it's already stated that it would be intended for emergency access, but that was it.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Okay, you can go back up to the table. Any further discussion?
I'm just trying to make the notes to make a motion.
Okay.
That we capture them, so...
Gotcha.
Um, so there's the intermittent pin that needs to be placed.
Correct.
There's a correction on note one needs to be made.
Correct.
Um, a note of intent on the 50-foot easement.
For that driveway piece that Ian was just...
Yeah.
Yes?
Um, and I thought there was one more.
Add that lot line on, lot, page two.
The, the lot line on page two, right.
Sue?
Anything else?
No, no. That's good.
Alright, so just help me out here. Do I make it as a conditional or do I make it as approved with those notes?
Y- yeah, I mean, you can make them as conditions.
Okay, make them as a condition, okay. Got it. Alright, so, um, I'll make a motion that we approve case 24-003, lot line adjustment, Nottingham Business Park, Route 4, with the following conditions, place the intermittent pin, correct note, um, one, note intent of 50-foot easement, and lot line on page two.
I'll second. Read those again, please, for me.
Okay. Intermittent pin placement, correction on note one, note the intent of the 50-foot easement, and lot line on page two, correction.
Okay.
EC, EC1?
EC1.
Based on what Ed was saying, is that reasonable?
Yes, right? Yes.
EC1 for the lot line on page two?
Yes, on page two.
Okay. It's been moved by Charlene and seconded by Sue to approve the application with the conditions, intermittent pin be placed, correct the note, uh, note one, um, note the intent of the 50-foot easement, and correct the lot line on EC or page two. Did I get that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Alright. Any discussion? Seeing none, we shall proceed to vote. All those in favor, Sue can probably say aye.
Aye.
You opposed? Fully carried?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you.
That was easy, huh? You're supposed to be all like that?
Yes, yes, I do.
Have a good day, everyone.
You too.
You too.
Alright, I, can I back to you?
You can make a motion if you'd like, yeah.
Move to have the, uh, acting chair be the chair again?
Uh, so just noting for the, uh, minute taker, Ian McKinnon has reseated him, well, reseated as the chair of the meeting tonight.
Yes, reseat Ian.
Um, alright. Just tell us it can be a fun couple months. Um, alright, the next portion of our agenda, we always reserve for public comment. Seeing as how we have none, we will move on. Uh, next item is approval of minutes from December 13th.
Those actually aren't ready.
Not ready yet?
Well, they're prepared, but...
Did you send them to me, Elena?
I did send them, yeah.
And did I respond?
I don't, I don't, I didn't see it, but I might have missed it, so...
Can you res, can you resend? I know the last set came to me, um, not as a Word doc.
Yeah.
And then you resent that.
Kelly did, yeah.
Uh, why don't you just resend? Because I keep copies at home.
Okay.
Yeah.
So usually Sue reviews them before the board and, um, and so would...
Yep. So we will table those, I don't need a motion to do so, we'll table those, um, so Ian McKinnon reviews. Alright, uh, next, select board and staff, uh, board member updates. Start with...
I'm all set.
I'm all set, but I do have a question. Is it okay if I ask now?
Yeah.
Um, when we had the discussion about changes for charges related to cases? I didn't see that postage was added on to, um, what we would be having the applicants pick up, and I thought we had talked about that. When I looked at the public hearing notice, I don't see where the fees that Alana, or the, um, when these are mailed out, the packets mailed out to us, the postage, is it gonna still be being absorbed by the town? Because that's what it looks like.
Is it? Be absorbed?
For those, yes.
And we shouldn't be.
We only collect for the public hearing notices to send up outside by mail.
Okay, so we should look into that.
Definitely.
Because normally, I've actually seen that where, as a condition of approval, you have, the town can keep track of those fees, because you're right, I think it was...
10 bucks for the assembly.
10 bucks sometimes, assembly things. So this is not the biggest one we've ever had.
Right.
So, um, yeah, we should...
Okay.
Normally, I, what I've seen in the past is, once action is taken on application, whether it's withdrawn, uh, there's, there's an RSA that allows the town to recoup that.
I figured there was. There has to be with the amount of mailings that's been going out. It's just, it should...
Well, to your point, when you have some of these big projects, Alana's mailing us three packages of plans over the life of the project, so. Mailing to individual members.
To the board members, yeah.
Yep. At a time when budgets are tight, we probably shouldn't spend $10 on... Next?
Go ahead.
A little, little busy. I'll pull an Ed and skip over myself.
Um, the only, um, big deal thing we have is that we have a new, um, alternate member, Johan Kirkoff, who has joined the commission recently. And this was a blessing, because so often, or a couple of times this summer, and then at our last meeting, he made the fourth. So we were able to have a quorum and conduct business. So, thank you, Johan. And anybody else? Alternate members on the Conservation Commission. That's it?
Uh, I guess CIP update, as the CIP... Yep, um, so in your packet is a draft, almost finished draft. I don't expect too, too much more coming in of the CIP. I'd say, you know, pretty standard, what we would, you know, normally see as far as, um, you know, capital reserve funds, vehicles, what, um, and such. I think the, you know, the one big ticket item, um, is the, um, in 2025, the school would be proposing, uh, a modular unit, which if you recall, that's what a lot of townspeople wanted to see instead of a building expansion. So that, that would be hitting in, of course, impact fees, and it'd probably likely be a pawn. I think further out, a couple of other, um, ticket items are, we've got a couple of big culverts that need to be fixed in the next, uh...
I think further out, a couple of other ticket items are, we've got a couple of big culverts that need to be fixed in the next three to five years. They're pretty big culverts. They're, we're looking at over a million dollar price tag. So we have another meeting coming up on the 16th. I think we'll probably be finalizing this. I don't think there will be too much more, and then I think we'll be ready. The board did, so I guess at the last CIP, the prior year, the group just said we need to meet sooner, but because of transitions with employees, you know, with a new town administrator and such, and a couple of new, you know, department heads, that didn't happen. So I think the goal will still be to try and get that back on track again. The other thing I just do want to point out is in year 2029, so the way this was kind of handled is Ellen, the town administrator, just sent out, asked the department heads if they had any updates. There were really no, no big updates, but I think, so 2029 will likely change next year. The other thing too is, I think you'll recall that there was an infrastructure assessment of our buildings and stuff by committee. Would a selectman want to hire someone to kind of work on that and stuff? So that study was not taken into any of this. I think once they hire that person, that's going to kind of, you know, determine what the priorities are and the needs and start to get quotes and stuff, we'll have more. So instead of just putting, you know, shooting in the dark what it might or might not be, we said, let's, let's wait. So I think CIP next year will hopefully have a little bit more numbers to the infrastructure needs that have to be addressed, and you'll see 2029 probably change a bit. But the rest of the years, like from this year to 2028, will probably pretty much remain the same unless, except for the infrastructure. So that's where we are with that. So just want to give you an update. So as far as the planning board's concerned, I don't foresee, like, there is anything that's in here that we might need to do, you know, new impact fees for, or anything, which is kind of what we're looking at this for. Is there something that we need to? So that's mine.
So you don't think there's anything impact fee wise, like even with the recycling center? I thought they.
So there's, again, that's in that infrastructure study, so I think once they, once they hire the person who's going to kind of take that infrastructure study and put more things in the Board of Selectmen Works towards putting together, like, priority list, then that's where you just start to see.
So that, that facility plan was like, this building needs, like, new siding or something like that, not, but in terms of requiring, you know, hey, our recycling center is being overrun or needs additional that, an impact fee? That's not covered under that. Where, he's strictly prioritizing, like, how to fix the buildings and keep, like, keep everything going.
Work on what we do.
Right.
Because I think what you're getting at, Trish, is it's been discussed by multiple here and I think even elsewhere, that currently the impact fees are only school, fire, and rec. Is, should, should, and you can, is, should there essentially be a public works? And you have to try and craft it to, and obviously the recycling center does fall under public works. So we don't currently have an impact fee for public works. There are towns that do.
Right.
And so to do that, we have to spend the money, that you have to hire those special, there's only a couple of people in the state that do it.
Right, I know that.
That know the impact fees. You essentially have to go through the process, public hearings.
Right.
Then you can start adding that as a standard impact fee for any building permit. So it's been discussed, and it's actually on Ed's list because it's going to be hard to do, but it can be several thousand dollars to get something added.
But the benefit.
I think, exactly.
Weighs that, I think, and this is where I think keeping all the departments up to date as to what's going on in the town would be a benefit because they can, they can plan better. It's been, I think people are so used to being in their own departments that they forget and don't see. I mean, there are people who don't even come down this end of town hardly at all, and, you know, if they work down the other end or they live down the other end, they don't come here. So they're not seeing what's happening within the town and the town's growth. And you certainly don't get a, even a snapshot of that if you go to the town meetings, because people are deliberative sessions, because not everybody shows up for those, or the voting. You don't see that the town has grown so much and is continuing to grow. And so things that should be being planned for haven't been, and that's why I'm saying I wouldn't be surprised to see a lot of these change once we start looking at what really needs to be done within the town. Even roads, like, the use that the library gets is torn up.
Dyrup it too.
Yeah, so, and because of that, because it's getting increased use, it's getting worn faster, it's getting torn up, it needs to be taken care of. We need, we need to start having that burden on the taxpayers go to the newer people that are coming in that are contributing to that as well.
Yeah, and that's where it's, you know, the whole reason behind the impact fee is that the new growth is causing that. So that's why there is limits to what it can be, like the school.
Correct.
I'd love to use some impact fees on some of the stuff, but it's, sometimes it's just equipment that's gone bad, so.
The impact fee can't be.
Yeah, the impact fee can't be used to cover it, so. I mean, I do see that they're, I assume they're doing bond slash impact fees, so maybe that modular they're looking at. Again, it's, a lot of times too, you have to be able to meet the criteria and essentially make it for argument, right?
Mm-hmm.
Public hearing and then.
Oh yeah, we've talked about it a lot with the school.
Be great if there is some impact fees that can be used and the case can be made to use some for that modular if they move forward with that. Yeah, I mean, my biggest thing is, I actually, when Sean, the previous board agent, was here, he had got a small group together to just kind of, some local engineers to sit down with him, and it was when he first really learned how bad the Cooper Hill culvert was. He showed some of the photos of that, and it's not pretty. And then obviously we're all well of the one-way street on Kelsey at the end there, so. I know from my opinion, it's, I think those costs are high based on what I've seen for construction, but I also understand a lot of times these are, we haven't gone out to bid on these, so it's based on an engineer's.
Right.
Assumption, which I can tell you, we throw like 20, 30% on the top of whatever we estimate to try and, again, cover for budget reasons, so.
And increasing prices between when you, when you propose and when it actually gets there.
And I don't think impact fees for a highway, I don't think you can do roads for that.
So you, you can, and cer, if a development is on a road and you can make the case, again, under the structure of the impact fee, you can, or you're doing off-site inaction. But in a case like Kelsey Road, say there was a bunch of developments proposed off of MacRillis, or not, but if we, via traffic count, and again, the problem is you have to have data, you could prove that the traffic volume on Kelsey increased by 30%, and it correlates to when development came in, you can draw that line. And again, it has to all be done under the guise.
Ian, can I ask you a question about traffic impact studies?
I can try and answer.
And maybe you can help with it too, Blair. But, you know, we've asked for a couple of traffic impact studies, and we've gotten them, and, you know, we're looking at 40 to 50 more vehicles on the roads based on these. And the traffic impact studies always come back and say, yeah, nothing.
Because there's a threshold. When you, well, when you're on a DOT road, there's a threshold of when an application requires essentially mitigation, or they look at start, they make you look further out.
I mean, you live off of Route 4. Route 4 is getting worse and worse every day.
I'm glad I leave really early for work, my choice, because I don't have to sit there for two minutes.
I commute on Route 4 to comfort every day, and it's just, I mean, it's just getting more and more backed up.
I grew up on Route 4 as well, so I hadn't gone far from it.
And there's more tractor trailer trucks on it. It's like.
If 156 is getting.
Yeah.
Crazy.
Yeah, so, I mean, the impact, and that's, the issue then is, you know, at the local level, a town can come up with guidelines as to when a, when a project generates a certain number of trips, it triggers something, right? So, well, I can tell you, for example, in the town of Kittery, I'm doing one right now, internally, the town has a requirement that if you generate, if your project increases the estimated trips leaving or entering the site by more than 40 in a peak hour, which is one of the determining factors that you, the rates you look at, that triggers, that you essentially are then looking at some form of mitigation with the town. The state of Maine, though, is 100 cars, and that's because, obviously, when you're looking statewide, they've chosen 100 cars, and I'm sure there's some data, but it's been that way for decades, is that they just, they, if they had every project coming to them with 20 cars changing, they'd be looking at every subdivision coming, so it's, they've chosen that number, and I believe New Hampshire is about the same, about 100 cars. So, and what that means is if you trigger it, you're likely looking at, you know, widening, turning lanes, shoulder work, so. And it's oftentimes a case by case.
And how do you, how do you, how would a town determine that? Like, how?
Determine what number we would use.
How did Kittery determine that? Did they have, like, a study done to show, and like, intersecting roads and where the traffic flow is and stuff like that?
A lot of towns, well, and also in a lot of towns where maybe you have a history of a dedicated town planner, a lot of times you can go back and look at that data. They might have gone and say, over the last 10 years of all the site plans that came before us or subdivisions, they basically just created a table of what the proposed trips are, and probably did some data to figure out what the average was, and found a comfortable number where they didn't want to see every application, because that is a burden too. I mean, there's obviously a burden on both sides, but they don't want to see every single application, because when you do that, it does trigger work for town departments, because you have to discuss the mitigation, you have to discuss the finances. It is more work for the town. They do get the benefit of off-site improvements usually. There's always, there is still funds, so it's a.
But often, the mitigation barely covers.
Yeah.
20% of the cost of the project. So the town has to be ready to invest another 80%.
Yep.
So that becomes part of the problem, because you can't just sit there and say, oh, put it in this kitty and wait for five other developments to come in until we add it all up, because now you're just saying, now you're just extorting somebody, because you're not, you can't make a justification that every one of those projects equally affected that one area where you're going to do the.
You can't guarantee timelines, right? And you can't hold somebody's money for 20 years either, so. It's, we've seen it before where, a lot of times with, like, waterline improvements, they will try and say, actually, the town of Kittery does this. They, very well-run water department with a good budget and surplus, is they'll actually see the benefit to go, we're going to pay for 50%, they'll tell you right up front, we want you to pay 50%, but we're going to pay 50%. They're not going to sit there at the table and see how much they can suck out of you. But again, not every town's run that way, and that's why it does get its more work on the town's behalf when you start getting, it becomes a negotiation, so.
If you don't have a ton of infrastructure where you have different levels of projects that are always needing to be done, it becomes difficult. If your community has mostly country drainage, like, you don't have, you don't have sewer systems. You know, I've worked, I've worked in cities before where we had full sewer, full, you know, subsurface drainage systems, full water systems. There was always something our public works guy could find. If I had, if I came in today and said, I got this project, oh, don't worry about it, I've got some, plenty of off-site exactions. He always had stuff that could match what they were doing, you know, the dollar amounts. So you just don't have that here in Nottingham, and that, so that means the town has to put it in, and that becomes difficult.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, because there's timelines on holding those impact fees and stuff.
Right, right, yeah.
So that's where, that's where the problem becomes, and sort of how can we have this new development, this, do, yeah, do off-site exact.
Yeah.
And I think this, this, yeah, I mean, I think maybe, I know we've got to address the fire station impact fees because the.
We're collecting fees that aren't your.
The loan was paid off, even though the impact fees were paying for a third of it, so. But, yeah, so I think, based on this, I would say we need to.
Well, that's one where we did talk, we can, essentially the board needs to hold a public hearing to amend it down to like a dollar.
But aren't they going to be, hasn't there been talk, and maybe I misunderstood chatter, but I thought they were going to be changing the fire department to allow the police department to move there.
Lot in here.
But that's what I'm saying.
The police impact fee was moved over, the police, the original $40,000 for 2025 was moved to 2024. The original construction design plans, and if you look, when you drive by, the centerage sits over the middle bays of the trucks, but not over the entire wing, because they built two-thirds of the original design, the original, there's another third that was designed to be an add-on police station. So they're looking to revive those plans. Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, so that needs to be discussed and put in this CIP, otherwise we're going to have to.
Well, and also the problem there is, our impact fee is explicitly for fire, not police.
Oh, true.
So that's another thing. You might want to look at a public works impact fee and a emergency services, so, but then you're changing. So yes, there certainly is, I actually, I remember, it was, I came to the budget committees where they asked departments to come, and the budget committee had asked about that, and I think one of the things, I haven't seen it happen too often, but most everybody on the budget committee agreed that we should spend money on the impact fee adjustments because it's money well spent, because you can start collecting those fees.
Right.
Higher fees and actually use them for more things, so. Yeah, because I assume that $250,000 in 2027 is for the police is. Engineering or planning or something, but.
We moved the original $40,000 of 2025, that's moved forward for a warrant article this year.
Okay, and that's for, like, the planning of it, like some?
I think basically redoing a quick, looking at what they have, looking at what they need.
Space assessments.
Potentially what we already, if plans are already there, can they revive them for relatively cheap?
Cool.
But then the construction will be cheap.
Yeah.
But that's another, then that'll be added on to next year's CIP once they figure out.
Yeah.
With that $40,000, we're hoping that they would look at the police department and say, they can sustain being here for a few more years and then figure out.
Might push that out, yeah. Yeah, and I think to your point, Charlene, it's important to get as much on the CIP as possible, because if it's not needed in three years, it comes off. But.
Right.
It is important if we do have impact fees that come about, if we can show that something was already on the CIP and we're not just throwing junk on there, we can then use impact fees on it, so.
Yeah, I think it's an important tool.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll make note of that to Ed, because we had reached out, we found, well, the guy that originally did our impact fees, I believe, is retired.
He's retired, yeah.
So we did find the other person, and I think it was just the timing around budget that we didn't get it in there, so we should get something and.
Yeah, we've been in communication, Mark Fugello and Ed and I have been in communication, what would the scope look like, what would we do? Very high level.
Yeah.
Obviously, talking about it amongst the whole group and then the rest of the town, but at least broached the subject. It is, it's about who's going to pay for that.
Right, and then we've got to go to the town to get the funds to support the.
Yeah, so I do encourage people to review the CIP, because I think to your point, I don't think there was, I think the issue last year is there wasn't a CIP, right? Like, they didn't, I don't think they pulled it together.
We never saw it.
Yeah, I don't think, and that was also last year was the question of, I know by statute, I believe, the planning board's supposed to run it, but that was never the policy at the town, I know you guys have discussed it in the past, for a selectman. But, yeah, I do encourage people to look at this chart, because this is now the first time it's been updated, and I think through two or three years to this level of detail, so. You can look at some of those totals and subtotals down there, and that's going to be hard to swallow. All right, other than, anything else? Anything, any, Blair?
Just a couple of things. I left in the office, the new land use regulation books. So if you asked for one, she ordered them, SRPC gives them to you as part of your dues and stuff, so they're in there. There's a couple of extra town reports and maybe, I think, like a C code environmental report, a few copies of that if you want to look at it. And, oh, so I have an email teed up here to Scott Cole forwarding Ed's comments. Do you have any just forward those on?
Yeah.
Now?
You would, I would say just forward, yeah, forward how many of the. You would, I would say just forward, yeah, forward how many of the comments that pertain to both of those cases. And then I'm just going to, I'll forward Alana the PDF of my handwritten ones. Because we've just posted those in the past, I don't have a problem. I don't put my social security on it or anything, so.
And I don't know that it would, it really changes anything here, because I had been working for you guys, but I have been working part-time with SRPC all this time, and as of this week, I'm now full-time.
Oh, congratulations.
Very good.
You going to move to New Hampshire?
I have been trying since I got this job.
Difficult?
We're just somewhere in this.
His house is on Stevens Hill Road on the Montez, the $700,000.
Somewhere not an hour and a half away, like it currently is. So yeah, I am looking, I will be in a better position to look now financially.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Yeah. But it doesn't change much here. I mean, I've been working for you guys this whole time. It's been this and this, that, for the lion's share of my hours. But now I'll be taking on some of the larger, you know, more long-term planning projects that we work on. So you might see me even here in different capacities.
All right, first, before I forget, I've already let Ed know, I'll be unable to attend the January 24th meeting.
Oh, so will I.
I'll be in Boston, so I can't, I won't be in the state.
So that means we're down two.
I'm going to take a poll then, who will be here on the 24th?
That means it'll be.
I plan to be.
I'm assuming John will be, but I can't.
Okay.
So somebody most likely will be here.
We need four, right?
Ed will be there.
And Ed did confirm, he's like, he said he should be, he's quite sure he'll be back. His wife will be all right, so. I did let, if you haven't let Ed know, I would email him now.
I will.
But I will, I had let Ed know when he let me know that he wasn't going to be able to make tonight. Other than that, town one, I believe we've, now, we've got the Warren article list, just for public to know. It was a busy week. You had a meeting on Monday. Budget committee was last night with a public hearing, I think.
Yes.
And I think as of now, as of today, the Warren articles have been published, or they're out there somewhere in the ether, so.
I may not be here on the 24th, but I will make sure, there will definitely be someone from SRPC here.
Yeah. And so the, knowing that there won't be some people here, I believe the only thing on the agenda right now is Owl Ridge, unless have we had any new applications? I don't think we've continued anything else except the Owl Ridge builders on Smoke Street. So to that end, we did have, I think we're all included, and Alana's uploaded his updated documents for the application on the 24th.
Didn't you say you had stuff for it?
Yeah. Okay. Yep.
So then we got to save it in our mail.
Yeah.
I like how we have a shopping cart. All right, so yeah, if we can grab that.
There's other stuff they provide, if you want to look at it now or.
I know, I know I will likely provide comment ahead of time, but it's been a while, so I think the goal here is that they've tried to respond to every single comment with the idea being that they've gotten through everything, that the board's at least asked of them so far, so. I'll make sure I review it and get comments emailed out to everybody ahead of time before the 24th, since I won't be able to be there.
Did you bring the new books as well?
No, I'm going to put them in my office before the meeting, so I don't have them. Anybody can follow me down and grab them if you want.
We usually don't get them till it's a new board, isn't it?
Yeah, correct.
Oh.
Yeah, Mark, you're going to be on the board still, it doesn't really matter, right? Like I'm not up for reelection.
You want to, yeah, so I guess.
Right.
All right, well, I'm going to hold on to this.
Gives me time to mark it up.
That's what I do.
Use Habsin. Tabson.
I do.
Motion to adjourn?
We'll take one.
Second. That was fast.
On favor.
Aye.
All right, that's unanimous. All right.